They're ready.
You're ready?
You want to send somebody?
All right.
This meeting is in order. We want to welcome you here. Welcome to Dr. Shaw and the Insight representatives here today. This is a special meeting. I would like to open with an introduction first from our elected officials. If we could go around the table and look, Dr. Shaw and the group knows who they're speaking with. We'll start with the Congressman. It's an honor to have you here.
Congressman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll.
Senator Malloy.
Here.
Senator Bernard.
Here.
Senator Hernandez.
Here. Congressman, I apologize.
And the Culver Director of Republican State Services, the City of Warren.
Mary Gay, State's Regional Director, Senator B. Stetson's office.
Thanks, Colback, for your director for Senator B. Stetson's office.
Danny Malloy, Trump County Commissioner.
David Thomas, State Rep for the Eastern part of Trumbull, which should be represented since she carries his best.
Rick Hernandez, President, Trumbull County Commissioners.
Elena Katz, Councilman for Insight.
Do I try to say CEO?
Doug Frankfurt, Mayor of City of Warren.
Tony Bernard, Trumbull County Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, everyone. First, we'd like to start the meeting. We have been asked by Insight to attend a meeting, originally looking for support from the Commissioners. And we did, and I've been in conversation with Polly from the Attorney's Representation. And we wanted to invite the elected officials. Also, Senator Moreno was here and we had some discussion earlier in the year concerning Insight and Dr. Shaw, we want to welcome you. We want to welcome and thank you for traveling from Columbus, Ohio. Just to let you know that the Commissioners would like nothing more than to see both Hillside and Trumbull open. I know that there's some obstacles to be able to overcome to get to that point, mainly, you know, employee-related and also, you know, some other questions that, you know, the officials may have. But before we get to that, we would like you maybe to open up with the dialogue and maybe, you know, give us your reasoning for attending today's meeting and being here. Dr. Shaw.
Absolutely. First off, I appreciate everyone and what's brought us now to this point. I definitely, you know, Senator Moreno was extremely helpful to us when it came to, you know, getting the CMS numbers and, you know, moving us towards the point where we can meet today. The mayor has been extremely helpful to us. The Congressman has been very helpful to us. The county Commissioners that came and, you know, lent their support virtually meant a lot to me, but I can understand the community as well. The legislative officials as well. The Attorney General, he was unbelievably helpful in the background. I appreciate things for it. I think that I appreciate the nurses and the nursing unions for their concern for the hospital community. And we're seeing that this is a community that touches multiple different people and that different places, they care about this hospital. We understand that very much so. And so we wanted to present a little bit about the background and then the future. And I don't know if you have that paraplegic set. Is that set up already? Do you have a paraplegic setup?
I can help.
Chrisy?
Yes.
That's lovely yours.
Yeah. So, Chrisy, can you put them on all three TVs?
Yes.
So, the, uh, really wanting to discuss a little bit is, you know, where we're going. In a few minutes, just to give you a presentation, a little bit about the background of things. But I want to go right to the beginning, you know, where the name of our institution is Insight. The idea is that we try to apprehend the problems and issues, whether clinical, whether it's community, whatever it is. And then look internally as to what the problems are, to then come up with solutions, apprehending, as we say, the inner nature of things. As an institution, we have certain values that really, I think, drive what we do. I think there's many institutions that proclaim values and, you know, the Bible and so on, some don't. But we do very much have a very intrinsic core value here in this county where we set to ourselves that we want to exhibit everything for our best. We want to put our best before. And that core value for me, more so than anything, I don't want to be too 60s-ish, but it's love. You know, we love our patients, we love our community, we love the work that we do. We want to exhibit that in everything that we do. And the decision that we make is based around that idea that we want to do great. And coming to Trumbull, I also want to point out that the Stewart's Hospital went from being for-profit to not-for-profit. This is not owned by Dr. Shaw. This is a community property. It's a five O and C three. It belongs to the community. It's very critical to know because the community, I believe, is the solution. It's not myself or my team. I think the community coming together, pull this together and produce the results that we really want. So, our history has been, you know, over the years, I'm a neurosurgeon, and we've done our best within communities. It started really in Flint, Michigan. You know, it's a troubled city. City. And at that time, everyone was moving out of the city and we moved into the city. The reason for that was that that's where the majority of pathology, more difficult cases and problems and issues. And so we thought that this was a place where, you know, practice medicine, there were zero free staff. It was an abandoned building. It was GM's old headquarters. And from there, we started to grow and acquire different institutions. And here we have my hard point trying to, so if you can, if you can maybe just start playing it. So, again, the idea is they don't want to be too verbose, so I'm just going to finish this in about ten minutes or so. But this is who we are. So, I'm presenting now, I'm going into a bit of the history. We keep going to the next slide. These are core values. And so we really want to be transformative. As I said, that we started in Flint and started to grow from there. Again, with this idea that we want to deliver great care. Next slide. So, one example I want to give you is Chicago. This is an important acquisition for us, 2021. This was within COVID. And this was in the middle of Chicago. It's a very historic hospital. And the reason I'm presenting this in particular is because I think this is the model we're going to have to follow at Trumbull. And what happened was the hospital had gone bankrupt and shut down. We acquired it and took it over in June 1st, 2021. At that time, the hospital was handed to us, to what we call an asset deal. So, it was complete handing over. Staff left, new staff came in, which there was overlap. And the new staff now are under our auspices as a midnight. So, at that point, it was emergency room, there was not much happening, and we built from there. We went from a primary stroke center, multiple specialties were established, we got multiple accreditations, the residency came back, a couple of months. Interventional cardiology, all specialty services, all in, now, 25. At that time, the hospital was in significant difficulty and public reports were showing that around seven to 10 million of losses per month. And so that's when we stepped in and established it and grew it into what it is now, which is thriving hospital, all the services and more than it had initially. So, just to understand, I think, a little bit of who we are through that model. Next slide. So, what happened, you know, with our involvement? I personally was involved with discussions with Stewart Health around two years prior to their bankruptcy in an acquisition in San Antonio. That didn't happen, and we didn't understand what the motives were for it to not happen at that point. We thought we were the best solution for the system, but they chose to shut the hospital down rather than, you know, to be deterred. So, that hospital, San Antonio, is a little, it's a center, it was a supportive hospital in the south of the city. That was my first experience. Fast forward in the summer, when the hospitals were in bankruptcy, we had discussions of potentially taking some hospitals over, but the terms were egregious. We did not accept them. We didn't think this was something that we'd be able to do. But on September 8th, just prior to September 8th, we got a call from MPT saying, these two hospitals are really in trouble. There, no one's going to take this point. Dr. Shaw, can you accept it? So, September 8th is the first time that it came to your wonderful county. And we looked at the hospital, assessed the region, that was several leaders, recognized that this is a hospital that supports the community. We're not driven by anything but that. And we ended up then assuming control of the hospital three days later, which is highly exceptional. Staying on the night of the 10th, just because I did not know physicians, I did not know the administrators, I felt these lives in our hands. So, the idea that within three days from seeing the hospital, making the decision, taking a deal, that's how we came in with the idea that we thought this is an important facility and we do not see anybody else coming or setting forth. But we were quite happy to partner with anyone. So, of course, we acquired and we started the work. And then, you know, we're so happy with the support that we had. And we, these are a few things that we immediately did. Number one, we enhanced the community advantages. We had some good things happening in the community that we did great. We became a nonprofit by one C three. That becomes, it became a transparent organization, came back here last time. Yeah, I'll tell you. The tax benefits, of course, immediately I realized the hospital does not have certain burdens on it that allows it to then reinvest. And then we qualified for grants, government funding, and a lot of wonderful things we continue to work on in the background, including the Pharma Program and other things that are critical, I believe, for the future of the hospital. So, again, all these benefits were, at the same time, it's community hospital. Next slide. In the acquisition, to understand that MPT continues to own the property. Insight is the operator of the hospital and the operating entity belongs to Insight. The physical property continues to belong to MPT. MPT has done nothing but wonderful in trying to provide us the support necessary to the patient, they've been trying their best to give us resources and within the facility. And so they, working with us now, have created a pathway for ultimate ownership of the operating entity, which is the hospital working entity, to own the actual property. We don't see that this is something that, you know, is, is achievable, number one. And we think it's important for the future of the hospital. The hospital has been living the next hundred years, it should own the property entity. Then there's no rent and so on and so forth. So, this is very critical to us, and they created that pathway to allow that to happen. Several improvements occurred, OR, IT, et cetera, et cetera, red cycle. Next slide. And we're quite excited about the different enhancements that occur in all of these different areas, from behavioral health to cardiac. Residency has been running well. New services were produced. Next slide. I myself am a neurosurgeon. I love operating and seeing patients. Neurosurgery hasn't been done in the hospital for years. I personally was on call every day for about six months. I don't think we transferred more than two neurosurgeon cases in that time. If you ask, and I say this with great humility, that I love what I do, but if you ask a neurosurgeon to take call every single day, they'll quit. And the idea that I was able to enjoy that time, I just would point out how much I want this hospital to succeed. This is an example of a patient that was stuck in the hospital, unable to be transferred or accepted by any external hospital. And on the left, you see the fluid in his brain making him recombinantos. That's too much water. On the right, you see the water went away. That's because that little tiny white dot in the middle of all that black, that sea of black. One of our nurses from the ICU went to go two hours to Cleveland to get a piece of the food that I needed to bring it back and use a magnet simply to turn dial, like you turn a faucet, that allowed further aggressiveness to spinal fluid. And the patient did so well. And again, to see that dedication from the nurse, off-hours, to go out and do that just tells you the staff that we had. And the idea that we were able to do that with a simple maneuver after two to three days, unable, being unable to transfer the patient out, saving his life. Next slide. Here's another case of one of the most difficult cases I think I've done with ankle losing, spinalitis, with this fracture in the neck. And the patient was badly flexed, and to be able to go in for the plate and fuse it in a wonderful arm with wonderful nurses and wonderful arm staff, to be able to do that complex case, you know, in Trumbull, again, the first time in decades that neurosurgery was being done there. Super excited about the industry. In fact, if you remember the operating theater, it has a great big viewing panel. There's a couple of people that are actually watching. I feel like it was, you know, Ron James is watching the operating. Next slide. So, again, the residencies were going well, things were growing, and we're so happy clinically and so on, and the work that is being done by the entire team. Next slide. So, the clinical growth occurred, the medical service, increasing numbers of patients were tremendous. So, again, you see that trajectory. Next slide. You saw the cath lab and OR volume decreasing. Next slide. You saw the emergency volumes growing tremendously. Next slide. So, all clinical indicators of growth, radiology, everything continuing to surpass our expectations. Next slide. And actually, now, first, I really want to pause for a second. And just to recognize, you know, I'm a pretty simple person. I don't normally get into financial or arguments, I am sorry, that nature. I wasn't quite prepared for what I was going to face now in the current situation here. We saw growth now in pharmacy revenue. This is the cruel data that we're showing you, that there's an increase in revenue that we're producing by our work. Next slide. Here are the numbers related to our bill charges. You know, we went from 48 million up to 52 million in the matter of a couple of months. And our real charges per month were hanging very high. And then they started to decline just at the end, just prior to our being shut down. Next slide. Our accrual and cash collections by month also show that we were incrementally increasing. So, what we were expecting in terms of accrual collections was that 9.7, 9.8 million. What we were actually collecting cash receipts is the orange, 7 million, 2 million, 6 million, far below our expectations. And that was never, it was never caught up. Not only that, the numbers that we're producing by accrual, these are numbers that were percentages based upon collections we expected from the historicals, which was, I would say, humbly speaking, not good. The actual numbers that they, it's around 14%, but in their, in their history, with us, we were collecting around 11%. But they shouldn't have been collecting around 22%. We actually, by instant billing, we were able to almost double the revenue on the case we were allowed to stake. So, I can just again tell you openly that it was not a good job that was done. They did not take our account seriously. We had no recourse. We were not allowed to bill. And not only that, they simply stopped billing at some point, dedicated. They told us we're not going to bill that anymore. And for no understandable reason, nor were we allowed to bill it. These are the types of things that absolutely accumulated and crushed our ability to bring in the revenue needed to run the hospital, where I believe it was profitable by the, by the activity that we were now producing. But the conclusion was that I want to be clear is the back office is not being controlled by us. And despite a clear contract as to what they were to do, the contract is, I believe, you know, basic words you write in this site. But at the same time, when you make the contract, it also has something to do with how it's going to be reported. And I don't believe now, looking back at the history, it was unexpected that they wouldn't report themselves properly. Next slide. So, of course, that led to all of the things they mentioned, you know. So, we had millions of dollars, and millions of dollars written off, adjusted. And we want, you know, the community to understand that, that we were left in a very difficult situation where now we're facing a situation where we have zero control over our own accounts. Working the accounts is very critical for a hospital to be able to do work and then get paid for it. Simple as that. And when that's not happening, there's a deterioration of finances. Next slide. So, moving forward, what are we going to do? And this is really, I think, where I really want to spend some time with our local officials, nurses, our staff, community to kind of understand that it's time now to get for it. Let's do our work. We were waiting for the change of ownership in CMS. That came late July. So, we now have a change of ownership for the Trumbull Hospital. And that means we are done with it. We have nothing to do with them. They cannot touch our accounts. They have nothing to do with us. They've taken their software. We don't need them for anything. Any other way was not accepted. There's no way we can keep. So, we're super excited about that. We had met with CMS. We're waiting visits from the IR Department to help and anticipating them to come, as well as JCO, which is Joint Commission. So, these are a few other steps we have to go through. The facility has been protected. We've made sure it's been maintained. That's been on us, on MPT. We've protected the equipment, the MRIs, everything is set to go. The hospital is ready to go, ready to go. What we're anticipating now in this next several weeks is to do quality. First of all, we want to hold up the emergency. That's going to include laboratory radiology, pharmacy services, as well as the patient services. And these are the critical elements now of getting the one. We have our own software now. We're super excited about it installed. And we want to continue from there to behavioral health. Of course, the operating room, the cath lab, these are critical as well as critical next steps. From there, we have to pause a little bit and try and understand what the volume is produced, what's the nature of the pathology. Is it going to be a lot of cardiac cases? Will it be a lot of strokes? Will it do trauma? In our own, you know, minor side of things, we're saying, we're analyzing if it isn't, that's trauma, the level, level one trauma, that is cardiac services. So, we don't want to preemptively decide what we're going to do. The ER volumes will dictate to us, much like the case in Chicago, as to what specialties we need to certainly responsibly. So, that's something that will be dictated by the community needs. But I believe the most important thing that we have to do is fill the gaps of the immersion to practice, things that cannot wait. Some things that can wait, those services, of course, the surrounding hospitals and so on, but what can't wait, that's something that we need to really move into. We do intend to open Elmer Road in Austin town as well. It is remote locations, of course, from the main hospital. And then, of course, we grab the graduate medical education. And of course, also the celestial room, our installation. Very pause for a second to talk a little bit about that. One of the main differences, perhaps, I think, in our institution is lowly defined as as end-of-life care, when someone is in the ICU, dying, and you really then resuscitate them. That's what any hospital has to do, any hospital has to do. We think that medicine is far deeper than that. It goes back into communities, preventive health. You know, even coming down to personalized medicine, it even to me, that's not even on. Our institution is equal to everything that's really about medicine is really the youth in communities. Because anything we can do to help elevate them people, that's really what's going to change the health. Dear young man or young woman that's growing up in a difficult circumstance, single mom, they don't have food on the table, they're not going to the best school, so no one's supervising them. I'm not sure what their health, how we can predict what their health is going to be when they're 25 or 30. I operated on a young man in Chicago. I came urgently, I'm an administrator there. They did not have a neurosurgeon immediately available. And I operated on him, and he was around 37. He died from hypertension. We were not able to save him simply because he had not been getting care for several years prior because he didn't believe in the system. And that, a 37-year-old, you know, six-pack, strong young man, was not receiving care because of kidney condition because of how he was treated when he was 20. His mom told me he was around 20. He was diagnosed, he did not believe in the system, did not get treated. Had blood pressure, pottable vessel, that's why he died. Again, getting to our community when people are young, giving them education, I think this is part of the problem. That's part of what we like to do. We've done that everywhere we go. That's as important to us as our health for us. We know that much is happening in this community. We don't want to replicate what others are doing. We want to participate. And where there's gaps, we think that's part of the vision of what our hospital should be trying to do. Lastly, Hillside. Hillside, we know is a fixture of the community. We do not have a change of ownership yet. And we're waiting for that before we can predict timelines and so on and so forth. But one of the things, again, I protect the community is that we're continuing the grid, the electrical grid, because we know the emergency services are running off of that. It is in our interest to not do that from a financial perspective. But we know it's critical to the community, but without that, we don't have the emergency services. We don't want to put that burden on the community. I honestly, it's difficult for me to talk about it because I think one's reward is elsewhere. It's not because people pat you on the back. And but I want the community to know that we're thinking very deeply about our role, what we can do to stabilize and help the community that we're now part of and principally part of. Next slide. So, these are, we are planning to now reopen. And as this unfolds in the next several weeks, I want to reiterate that I don't believe that me, our team, our leadership team, our administrators, physicians, I don't think that's enough. The infrastructure of the hospital begins with our nurses. I think that they are the backbone of the hospital. I think that beyond that, the administrative and support staff are critical. There's facility work that has to be done. Our elected officials have been, I don't, I don't know if you realize how much I appreciate you, because we would never have been here without you. Getting the CMS number was very difficult for the community. I'm hearing, it will be really awesome. But the fact that the mayor, the commissioners, the senators, the congressmen have put their best foot forward and they have, you know, supported us, I will forever respect that. Because we're not here to find, with the hospital. We're here to make this a beautiful thing. But that support is what allows me to now sit here and talk about these things because none of those movements, they're very difficult decisions to make deep in government, at that level. Without that support, we're not here to, we're not able to do these things. At the same time, we see tremendous concern around the community. We want that support. We want that concern and channel it into the energy needed now to bring the hospital back to the top of the heap. We hope that one day this will be a story that's told about what happened, the nature of the problem, the difficulty, and the idea that the most important institution, I believe, in our country is a hospital. It's the most important institution. People live there, they die there, they treat each other. Communities come together. Peoples come together, ethnicities, religions. There's nothing but beauty inside of the hospital. I hope that we can really make this something spectacular now. And we will, of course, keep everybody informed about specific times and dates that some of these things could unfold. We're very excited about the next steps that we're going to have. So, thanks so much. That's just a little bit of an introduction to who we are, where we're going.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. I appreciate the information you have shared, and I'm sure that there are some questions from some of our, like the officials, and I also had some questions from those that, and I want to thank Um, from those that, and I want to thank the um, the nurses and the union that that are present. Uh, for um attending and also for the calmness that's in the room, as you can see. Um, we know that there's a struggle, there have been a situation, and a lot of members of the community were laid off due to. Um, you know, the shuttering of insight. But we believe that that can change. And we, uh, one of the, one of the questions that I uh. That I wanted to uh ask concerns employment in the nurses and the doctors, you know, some have moved on. Um, the nurses, some have moved on to other um hospitals or jobs. Um, with that in mind, um. Are you actively working with the union and what is the direction right now? How does the employment? As far as moving forward, how are negotiations going uh right now with? The unions or the nurses union or the doctors? Uh, it was one of the questions that it was um, you know, very important. Um, and to open a hospital, of course, you need employees. Um, the second question today is about the medical equipment that was removed. And all those items that, you know, that are housed in the hospital to make the hospital prime. Um, I don't know if, Doc, you can answer that or I can't?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, we are continuing to work with the unions and we have to now understand who is available to come back. I will also dictate because again, it's unreasonable for us to expect that, you know, everyone's ready to come back. But we have to understand not only the uh, you know, the number of people, the expertise, the levels and so on. That's all what I want to dictate this. That's why we're careful to say that as we open up these programs, we we have to do it in a responsible way so that. We don't get mistaken this step where a patient gets hurt. So we have to be careful about that. So we're going to need to work with them. And to uh, you know, dictate our staff. They're capable now of doing the work. As I said before, you know, with the, what we had done during the six months that we opened. Uh, that, you know, we, we of course had his staff was here, uh, so we were also supporting the sharing staff. Sharing the hospital staff and and they were doing appointments. We did not understand that. So we really want to do our best to ensure that, you know, that there's dedicated physicians for everyone. And of course, they take it by our needs. So we continue to work with them. As far as the equipment removed, we didn't, I I don't believe there's always anything that was removed except one very big scanner. But beyond that, our MRI, CTs, uh, everything are intact. Our lab equipment is intact. It's extremely pristine. So there's a lot of things that are there, very little than anything that left us because we recommend immediate. We don't like to pay for it if it goes on something bad, you know, uh, role or anything of that nature. But the hospital is physically all you can own it's ready. So that physically, if there's anything on patients.
Mr. Green, do you have a question?
I am, okay. Uh, Congressman, any?
You mentioned when you're structuring the deal, that if they were uh certain terms, are you going to go forward? I don't know. Can they just fill my classroom? How the hell can the people who were under indictment? Which they steward, who was, correct?
Yes.
How can they dictate the terms of the deal going forward? Is that bankruptcy court?
Uh, it was through the bankruptcy court and it was through um the constitutional service agreement. And how it was all structured. So if you look at um. And well, if if you look at the the constitutional service agreements. You know, we're we're aligned with everyone. We don't need a government, a real government. We're aligned. You know, they want us to do this. We were assuming Stewart wanted the hospital to survive. But despite what had happened, they were, it was in their interest that it comes back reputationally, it was good for them. We didn't think we had to go through a prime line with every single line item. They were, they, for example, had said that they wanted to do to keep our billing for us. Not that they, because all of the thirty three hospitals were together, they didn't want us to impose some other hospital. So we said, that's reasonable. They kept doing the billing. One of the first things they did, they removed some of the key builders that we had. Uh, that we had relationships with because we had AI software that was going to sweep the accounts, which would then show us all the flaws within two seconds. They they immediately kicked them out and pointed out that in our deal, nowhere did it say they had to be funded. We said, that was what you were currently doing. Why would you kick them out? And that's when we saw that twenty two percent return went down to eleven percent. And I know these are technical details, but it's, to me, it's it's a critical test. So so of course, we need that that amount of hospitals have needed tremendous time. The deduction out of our ability to make things efficient. So the the idea that we didn't expect them to be this way with us. And that's why I credit, again, I don't know all the different steps, but I I credit the attorney general. I do believe. Uh, attorney general knows in his public statements, which included the idea that there's Medicare and Medicaid money involved. This is not simply commercial private cash. This is now a critical problem actually. So. I don't know what happened, but it suddenly started to become more sensitive to us, more exposure. So I I I personally believe it was the attorney general that helped us create this state of that. So, um, so we were in a position now where in normal circumstances, we don't need to find line every single thing. We're going to do the billing. Obviously, you can do it the same way as you did before. So then, of course, they collapsed Stewart. They have another organization where you transfer a lot of these functionalities. And there's no one even, it's not who you talk to. So unfortunately, uh, I was incorrect in believing they wanted to do the money to support and grow the hospital. They funded their bankruptcy, so that's basically.
Come out of your own pocket, pay these expenses.
We we paid uh over, let's say, around thirty million dollars we've lost so far as an institution we've lost over thirty dollars. After this uh this transition, but we signed up for making the hospital work, where it continues to do what we have to do. But again, it became too much of a burden.
We can only operate under eight to percent topics.
Yeah.
Big money is a lot of debt.
It's a lot, uh, but at the same time, if I look at these numbers, they're steady. Either with your cruel numbers and if we achieve that twenty two percent, we would, that would become another cruel thing. You know, in the sense that we had the ability and we saw the cruel revenue, we were negotiating with their their commercial agents and so on. It's extremely exciting to see that growth. Like, so in that six months, every single one going up, specialties were being added. I was assuming, okay, this is going to sort itself out. Eventually see it. Then I started to see the red dots. I saw all sorts of things happening that, so you're not working the AR, you're not working these accounts. You stopped building Medicaid. You're not letting us into the accounts. You're not letting us bill. Our team is exceptional at this stuff. Our AI is incredible. They're able to run. These are the type of things that were happening. Anyone who understands the background business, that's like. You are, both your legs and and one of your arms are, you just get a lot of action.
But going forward, you're going ahead and you're on software, like you.
Hundred percent. Yeah, we have nothing to be concerned at this point. All the software is ours, uh, the team is ours, the staff is ours. There's no baggage, what they're needing from them. And um, you know, our.
Is there anything any of us can help with trying to recruit that which was stolen? It was stolen.
Yeah, you know.
Work, work, you should have made.
We we are still doing our best. We are in some way trying to recover those accounts. And those accounts will be able to be in our system and then we're allowed to fill them. The way that it works though is they were built out of Stewart's tax ID. So it would go even now into their account and then we openly give it back to us. So, uh, you know, uh, so the effort that we're going to put into it. And they say, I don't want to, you know, uh, be too broad because I'm no lawyer, but the idea that. They shouldn't be able to retain Medicare and Medicaid money. I I I think that the commercial and private pay might be more of a civil issue. Uh, but I think the other, I don't think we should be able to retain that now. If we bill and it goes into their accounts and we have zero visibility, that's going to be an issue. We can't reconcile and so on. So it's very difficult for us to do. But we would love to find uh some way for them to allow us to do that. And government can help us to get permission to do that. We'd be in their accounts. We don't need anything at all. Just give us visibility. When it comes to it, we'll reconcile my item for the patients. We would, I, it is my hope to use that, I hope.
Naturally, uh, the employees and doctors are. We concern the community and and I understand that everybody understands that you need them to move forward. You also have to have enough funds to substantiate till you get up and running. And and once you, once you do reopen, do you have enough funds to carry you through, get everything going? And and I'm hearing, you know, I'm not really sure that all the negotiations with the nurses are going the way that they should be. And and they're a critical part. They need to be at the table and that agreement needs to be reached. Because when and if you do reopen, we don't need you to close three months, four months down the road. So. When you open, you have to make sure everything's in line and you continue to open. And and we need you, you know, we need that hospital. Everybody in this room knows we need that hospital. But we also have to make sure that it's done right.
Right, I think, right. You appreciate that and um, yeah, so the the. The the key thing is we have to work within the plans that we get. You know, you cannot be uh, you know, foolish in this terms of how we build. That's why I think it would be very intentional. If there's significant volume, we're going to see that revenue within a few weeks. So that's going to come into the emergency room, do some of the physician cath lab work we do and so on and so forth. That will then dictate how we grow on a financial level. Clinically, we're going to grow based on the needs of the community. So we have to match these things together as we grow. Um, and so any support we can get from the community, I mean, a simple example is pharmacy. We worked very hard to get through the pharmacy licenses here. If the community can help us by using the pharmacy, that will help fund things. But at the same time, when it comes to, uh, you know, the the nurses, I would again, put this out. Ask for patients from them because we've done everything we can to do for the community. As much as I could go before breaking personally, I'm trying to do. And we don't, we need a collective decision-making, collective understanding as to what's happening. I hope so, open. It is a five oh one, two, three. Everyone will know exactly who this is, what, what are the targets, where are they going? Everyone's going to see that. So we're not here to do anything, we've got to be responsible. We're hoping that, you know, again, with that understanding, as far as going well or not, I'm not personally involved in those discussions with the nurses and unions. But now, as of a couple of weeks ago, having the change of ownership of the CMS staff. We're now in a, in a, in a, in that position where we really have to bring people on, make the decisions, have a specific start date. While that start is not, that start is happening, but a couple of minor things have to happen still before we can be very, very specific. I I don't want to, you know, ask someone to come back and then be open ended about what date they started. And and again, how big and how quickly uh we grow is going to depend on the volume that we see and the nature of the pathology.
President, we're here as to leave. Thanks, Rick. Uh, thanks, Jim, for uh organizing this meeting. Uh, I got one or two hats for you. Learnable in Allen Township trustee, Hillside Hospital. When do you expect the ownership, the change order to be all purchased? From uh Stewart to you guys?
It's in the next several weeks. Right now, there's so many teams that have a lot of, and so we don't know specifically. So this, we're very happy.
I know for Hillside, the change of ownership has not yet happened. So the change of ownership is not in our hands and we're waiting for that decision. Government is helping us. We're waiting to see Hillside change uh ownership. So we just don't know. It's not in my, I would love to say in a few weeks, I hope, I think. Um, but again, we don't have a specific answer.
Doctor, please give your name too, so everybody.
Uh, Dr. James Lobal, Jr.
Your trustee.
Township trustee. And my second hat uh is um, I'm leaving on the sole representative of the medical executive committee here at Fort Trumbull Hospital. Uh, a lot of us have stayed there. I think maybe one or two physicians have left. A lot of us have gone to Sharon and back to each other. So I can, I can speak for myself and probably enjoy those uh, those people that. Will probably come back and and try to rejuvenate the hospital because a lot of us were dedicated to Trumbull. Because, you know, there's our children born there. You start a fracture, like my case, my father was there for years. So a lot of us have a heart. Uh, dedicated to Trumbull Hospital. So I think you'll see that uh also with physicians. When do you think um myself or you or both of us can recall new medical executive committee meeting? To help bring back organized departments in terms of medical staff? And concern is now with new business coming, especially with Triple A Park and Allen Township, uh, the other expansion that uh, that even the way mentioned, uh, horse town. You know, one emergency room is not going to handle any urgent cares that may come from industrial business plan. So again, being the second hospital is is finally important. So again, what do you think we can recall our staff, medical staff at this?
I really appreciate that. And I I would say to the uh, to everyone listening, that one of the first things that we had done when I realized that this is. Really getting some big trouble is come to the med staff meeting, speak to the physicians first and foremost, say that the. I need your support. There's things that are happening. We talked about going to paper. Stewart was shutting down the uh, the EMR, the HR. So we would no longer have access to MedTech etc. So now we have to use paper like we're in the nineteen fifties. Writing our groups and stuff. And if that decision, unfortunately, we know that that's very unsafe for the state. Can't access records from remote areas. So despite these, they're going to take away our medical record, isn't it? And we can legally vote to paper, but it's kind of crazy at this stage. So again, the idea that the medical staff right now, where they are in their lives, where they're working, they're really, we absolutely love to be checked. And the idea now, I would say the next few weeks, we're going to be there. And but again, the only hesitation I have is I I really would like to have a specific time date. That way, you know, that's what we're. Um, and 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 people to understand that. So but the idea that, you know, those meetings, they need to start at this point. And we can definitely schedule it and we, I'm still waiting to see which physicians really. It is a lot of people, but at the same time, people have lives that, so we don't scale up the staff. So if we open up the version two, for example, version general surgery, you don't have general surgery. We have to understand what med staff is really built.
Yeah, no, three of the active medical activities are actually active staff in Sharon Hospital. I stand for the tapes and something like that. So I see, give access to quite a few of the key.
Yeah, we're we're excited to see them come back again. But again, you know, there's a degree is negative, it's a lot of to be. You know, with the decisions, I I hope they don't, they recognize what's happening. So the idea that. I'm hoping that we can move forward and we're together and make this work as much as what. Leading on the medical staff to really, you know, be part of this with us as well. At the end of the day, I'm a physician. You know, and I'm going to be leading this hospital. And the idea that I'd love to see surround, be surrounded by my colleagues and the nurses, of course. And let's do this together. So I I'd like to start meeting probably the next few weeks. I'll reach out to you personally.
Yeah, but I'll send them out of house.
I started receiving.
Thank you, Rick.
I, as I was mentioning to you, I started receiving around a thousand texts a day. So it's hard for me to keep track anymore. So my number is kind of out there, so.
So if I'm reading it correctly, this is a process. It's not something that's going to happen real soon. It's going to be a couple of months down the road, thanks again.
Actually, no, we're thinking weeks. You know, we're not looking at this to be a long process.
Weeks, you mean four weeks or weeks, you mean ten weeks?
That's that's difficult for me to say because the, as I say, Jacob's going to come by, Woody H. has to come by. We're doing everything we can to expect. We're we're ready to go. So that's something where I don't want to mislead the public. So.
So it's not, it's not a long.
It's not a long, no, no, no.
We just need. We need the nurses to be on board with this.
The nurses have to be on board.
That's critical that you keep meeting them.
One hundred percent.
Yeah, one thing, I guess more of a call than a question. Um, from when this happened initially, a lot, most everybody in this room. Was in it from ground zero, before there was even an insight on the map for us. And there was a timeframe where we heard the rumors. We hoped it wasn't true. We started seeing the writing on the wall. And we had rallies. We had people come together. Then we basically, our community got screwed by Stewart. And Stewart's the bad guy in all this. We have to keep that first and foremost to remember. And there was a time I see uh Mr. Woods here and other people. There's time the community came together. And our only goal was to save the hospital. We want somebody there. We don't want the building torn down. We don't want a vacancy. We need a hospital there. Insight. But whatever means was the one that stepped up and said, we'll take the responsibility. We'd like the facility, we'd like to move to your community. From the first time I met you, you know, I'll vouch, and I think the mayor would too. Um, I looked in your eyes, saw you were serious about it. So a lot of people thought a scam, they're a setup from Stewart. They're a setup from Stuart. They're just coming in to get the rest of the money before they go. And I think I've lived it. A lot of people in this room have lived it. We've seen the hospital reopen. We've seen people's jobs retained. And every one of those jobs could have been lost. We could be sitting here right now talking about a year ago, remember when the hospital left and we all lost our jobs? That didn't happen. Unfortunately, Stuart still had some skin in the game and was able to screw us again. And that's not our fault. It's not your fault. Anybody that would have come in, it sounds like would have been in the same boat as Insight was at that time. So we're very thankful that, that you stuck with our community as we've stuck with you. Uh, with this year coming back, based on the tracker we have with you, there was a time Commissioner Bernard and I met with you. You could have cut run and took your losses. You didn't have to lose thirty million dollars. You could have said this didn't work. Let's write it off as a, a bad experiment or a bad investment. And you could be in Michigan right now doing brain surgery on somebody. But you chose to be here and now you're kind of starting from scratch. And unfortunately, maybe that's the route we should have been from the get-go, but it proved that it can be successful. You proved already to this community that you can come in, run the hospital and make money. If you would have been able to collect it, we wouldn't be sitting here today. I personally, as you mentioned, I'm going to trust you again. And I believe what you're saying to us. We do care about all the jobs. We want everybody who wants to work again to get back through one of them that have same quality of life they had. We know we're going to need you in the future more so than you even realize right now with our community. And we know the jobs are going to get better as we get patients, as we get income, as we get money. Um, and I think that's one thing that's kind of hard right now to go from where you were to start right back up without missing a beat. Unfortunately, every one of us in the community is going to miss a beat on this thing because of Stuart, not because of Insight. So I'm proud that our congressman stepped up. I'm proud our senator stepped up. I know that the community has been behind you since day one to save our hospital. Now, of course, we're saying save Hillside. It looks like we're on track towards that. Unfortunately, there's a bump in the road. You know, but I do believe that you're not lying to this community. I do believe your heart is sincere and your staff is sincere. You know, I've seen it. I've lived it. And the one thing that spoke wonders to me, Commissioner, when you and I went to meet with him, there was a soul in the hospital and Dr. Shaw messes door and scrubs and he told us someone shows up at the door with a problem. I'm, I'm going to let him in. I'm going to treat him. I'm going to do something. He didn't even have a nurse in the hospital with him. So that was something that shows me that you really want us to succeed. You're taking another big financial gamble. And, and we're on this ride with you. Just remember that. Remember the people, the faces in this room. And I see signs all around the room, transparency. That's the big thing. And we just asked out, you know, the ins and outs, the daily business, we shouldn't have a say in. Why'd you do this? Why'd you do that? You know, that's your business. But for the good of the community, we do need transparency, knowing what you're doing, not why maybe, but what you're doing so we can bank our families on it. There are people potentially that got another job that are going to quit and come back. But they wouldn't want to yo-yo effect of them giving up some burden hand to come back and trust you again. We want to know that that's secure, secure and sincere. So that's for something that we just asked at this point. We've started this, you doing this today is fantastic. The community coming here is fantastic. Keep the transparency up as you go with every step of the way, and I think the community will follow. Uh, I know I'm, I'm going to give you a chance with this thing. I remember the rally there when there was very little hope and then we got hope. And here we are today and it looks like people are going to have jobs again. So that's, that's where I stand with this thing. Eric?
Thank you, Commissioners. First, first, I want to thank, uh, the Commissioners for, uh, rearranging the date of this, this meeting. And, and Insight for making sure that Dr. Shaw could be here, uh, for his presentation, his presence. I, I think we, we saw his, his commitment to our community. Um, and, and I want to say personally, I appreciate, uh, historicals for perspective of, of this whole role of coast to ride for our community. I think that's very important as we, we move forward. Uh, most of the commissioners, and also I got to go to a staff member, uh, Dane Wally, who's a recovery mayor. Um, who's been in constant contact with me. I thank you, uh, for keeping me informed. That whole episode, uh, regarding the TSA agreement and your, your belly dilemma. Uh, when you had no control of that, I sort of understood that process and that challenge. Uh, but I, I'm glad you presented that to our entire community. Now, most of the questions that have been answered were, were questions that I had, so I'm not going to repeat or ask the same questions. But there was one thing in your presentation, uh, that I think Barry is repeating. Uh, that's the, the path towards ownership from M T G. Could you weigh in a little bit more on that? Because I think in the long term, that's critically important. And before you answer that question, I also want to thank Tom Conley, Danny Lindis and, and the Amherst Association. I had a pleasure of running up with your legal counsel, the president of the Ohio Nurses Association and Dane, uh, in the elevator. They didn't know where they were going to us. So, man, it's true. Uh, but I, I want to thank you and I, I want to say this. Um, I'm, as, as mayor, I'm not at negotiation tables as much as I usually be, uh, when I'm a safety service director. But I want to say one thing about our community and organized labor in general, not community. They will always operate in good faith if they're given all the information. Uh, so that's just a repeat of the transparency that they demand. So as long as we do that, we can get to where we need to go. But if you could weigh in on the, uh, the path towards ownership, getting out of the, out from under the M P T, uh, real estate asset.
Um, so this is again, an area where, uh, it's, uh, I don't think the public fully understands the way that assets to a hospital work where they're monetized. There's ways you can actually extract money out of a hospital. And so the problem that occurred with Stuart was that they, well, they owned all their hospitals. They stole them. And then they started to pay a bet on them. And that accumulation of debt over several years eventually led to the asset weakening, weakening, evening, not having the money to run. Now, I think to me, I don't know what's a more important institution in this country than a hospital, as I've said. You don't come to set up to an ICU agent, but eventually run for twenty four hours. You know, they need twenty four hours. So the, these hospitals are precious and need to be protected. I don't think it's, it's wrong for a hospital to do what they did. To be honest, I think it's a tool to get the revenue to reinvest. But if you take the revenue and you, you buy nice things with it, then it's not really going to the benefit of the hospital. So we don't believe that the long term, when we saw this in COVID, our institutions said that when, when physical property is owned by the operating entity, you go through some, some times where there's some ups and downs. It's still fine. I think that's going to happen. So M P Ts are very gracious. They understand that this model is to, uh, to, to own hospitals and properties. The greatest pathway for us to now own the hospital, as this operating entity, can set trouble. So the idea that we would be able to eventually own it is what we're working for. So some of the profitability, we're, we're taking for buying property itself. So we're working towards that. They're participating with us. They're very patient. They've even been helping us with the physical facilities and so on. And we can even meet with them, talk to them, uh, about a plan. So they're very invested, certainly. But the idea that eventually we do want the hospital to, to the hospital, that is our habit.
Ready? Oh, Tom?
Yeah, go ahead.
Tom? I'm going to tell you that.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, we're asking.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I, I know, I know you're.
Yes. Anyways, we're ready to match our brothers and sisters from the other.
Yeah.
And Dr. Shaw, respectfully, and I underline the word respectfully, that, um, we have been severely traumatized as well. My members here were all ready to get on board and let's go with Insight. Go, go, go. And then a day in March, went down to a conference room. Told we were all done here, everybody home. Happened to be payday. Didn't receive our pay. You still haven't received our vacation pay for this. And I now am faced with the task of, first of all, negotiating a contract that may contain concessions. And also to entice the workers that were there to come back. And I'm taking, I'll take suggestions from you, but in order to do that though, I need this company to be transparent with us about what their intentions are. Can't negotiate a deal. I can't, we can't. We can't put our trust back in you as much as we'd like to. I still have people here that can't provide for their families. They're getting their electricity turned off, so on, so on and so forth. And a nurse doesn't need to do that. A nurse will go get a job sometimes, you know? I'd like them to come back and work with us. So I don't know. That's going to be between the both of us, I think. So I pledged to you, we're going to try to get along, going to try to do what we, what we need to. But my hands are tied about a lot of things and you'll know what goes on. Okay. So we wish you luck. Please wish us luck.
I really appreciate, and I recall when I first presented in the hospital, you were right in the front and you were so supportive of me. And that trust is what bothers me, you know, the trust bothers me that we were not able to succeed. I, I only, if we expand and what you have, a lot of reasons, you know, be and we had some real difficulties that I didn't anticipate, you know, I, I even now, going back, all we could have done was when the war act was already, uh, you know, issued before we came in. To let that happen, but go away with the idea that now we extricate from Stuart, you'll take a few months. They'll take their software, go, war act, and not be, uh, issued. So the idea that, um, you know, I never say if, this, that, whatever can happen. I don't, I understand things. I understand people who are higher level. I understand how we're scoring the charts. I understand all that. But, but I'm sitting here today wanting this hospital to come back down. I'm just like, what's going to happen? You got to do this together. I really need your support now. Uh, I'm not sitting here today because I think it's a big financial advantage. Just, I love what I do. I want to see our system grow, deliver, be in care. I want, yeah, I'd love to do that. This, obviously, in our history, we don't go to places where we're competing for some kind of supervision. You know, we, I can buy, uh, that's not how we function. So I'm excited, I'm invited energy in this room, that I, that we can be in this room, build with people that want this person to succeed. That to me is more important than anything. The biggest value that I think, my staff, my employees, licenses and assets and banking apps is the team. This is the team. We're going to succeed. This is the amount of energy that once this hospital succeeds, we're going to succeed.
Thank you, Doctor. And you have a question?
Just clarity and, um, until four and, uh, everything ended in Manhattan. I remember the meetings that we were having and it seemed that there were two options that you had. One was the TSA. The other one, I believe, was also the law. So M P T is, came to the table with you and seemed that they are willing to negotiate the eventual sale of property. Are they willing to work with you on payment process as you get to that eventual possible sale? And just to clarify, and I don't want to use the, the numbers that you've given us, but are you totally out of the TSA at this point? Is, has Insight been able to take care of, take over all of those services that were covered under the TSA? Because in all honesty, those two things seem to be what we're just in sum out of.
Yeah, um, again, I feel unfortunately I can write a book about what was happened, but here in March, they basically told us to not get this in the same way, like zero. And the reason, uh, they said was they wanted us to acquiesce and acknowledge that other funds they had taken were theirs. So if, if there's disputed amounts and non disputed amounts, that's a, this is a non disputed revenue. Unless we formally said that the disputed amount is theirs. Right? So, so in other words, what are we supposed to do? It's like, want to use the word, it's lacking that work. It's extortion. So, you know, again, dealing with them and how they swept the accounts and so on, you just we want nothing to do with it. We're completely extricated. There's nothing to do with us. There's nothing to do with anything that facility. Uh, so we're very happy with that. M P T, on the other hand, has been extremely gracious. We've been communicating with them back and forth. You know, every week we have some type of interaction, you know, with them. So we're very surprised and happy about how they should do it. They understand what the community needs. I, I, again, I don't know the full feelings in the community or some of these institutions. I don't know. I mean, people support Stuart and I mean, support even our interactions with them is nothing but exceptional. Very happy to have it.
So is there going to be any, that's what we used, and I remember with the number, they were, they were large numbers.
Yeah.
Will there be any relief to Insight as you are negotiating for that possible sale?
We're continuing discussions, you know, and just seeing their hearts and this, I feel good about that. Uh, obviously, I was wrong in my previous assessment of Stuart. Um, but no, M P T has been good with us and I feel that we are going to come to have a good place.
Thank you, Doctor. Um, and while we're at it, I do want to, uh, thank Holly, who you and I have been in many conversations prior to the meeting. And, uh, representation from Binesh, Friedlander, Copeland, and Arnoff, who represents, uh, Insight, Doc. Um, I want to come back to what Commissioner Malloy had said. Um, the Commissioners are in full support of your operation. We will move leaps and bounds to get these hospitals back open. Uh, I think I can feel the, the passion and the heart in the room. And I know those that are here too, you know, that have been, um, let go as employees. I really truly believe that you will be able to, you know, reinstate, uh, Tom, uh, negotiations to get this hos, these hospitals back up and running. Um, it takes a lot for you to travel from Columbus to come here to face, you know, these types of uh, circumstances, especially when, you know, you went through what you went through. It's, it's admirable that, like you, Denny had mentioned, that you and Commissioner, when you're in there and you're scrubs and you're, you know, waiting for the last patient to, it have, if you have to operate. Um, one thing I did want to point out, and it's been brought to my attention when Senator Moreno was here and we, we got into the subject matter of Insight. Um, it's been brought to my attention that as a nonprofit hospital, that you stand a much better chance of success with the monies that can be received on a federal level too. Mercy Health and those hospitals that are all nonprofit seem to be able to, uh, keep the operations going. For profit seems to be a much different animal. Um, can you elaborate a little bit more on the nonprofit status and how that works? I think you're, you're more, you're more open to dollars, federal dollars and different things that can come to support the hospital.
Yeah, there's, uh, models have, uh, you know, a for-profit hospital. They own it. They want to make it work, but then every dollar means something. Uh, you see charity care go down to a significant degree. Um, and they're, you know, there's certain programs, but again, the value of the hospital enterprise and the dollars cash flow, it do belong to Center. And, you know, that's, that can be a credit of money. So nothing wrong with that. It's, you know, the right responsibility. But whether for profit or under profit, our community is relied on these hospitals. Once you're there, you have a responsibility, I believe, bigger than just that system. What we believe with the five one C three, uh, approach, um, I believe it will last a while. You'll outdo, if you have a five one C three, uh, you're not for profit hospital, it's a community home, it's a community board. People are watching what's happening, money, they're making decisions together. And then they're, they're definitely, others will have a lot of programs. One of the things we're super excited about is we got food for something, uh, pharmacy, just a meat program. This is critical for us. It's absolutely critical for us. Just on that, none of those numbers are shown for you. What we can do if you put a meat program, it's massive, this is what this hospital. That would not be available in the setting. So again, there's multiple programs that we have that we can potentially access out of the hospital. That's one of the main reasons.
Thank you, Doc. Do we have any other questions before, um, uh, again, we, uh? May?
Yeah.
You?
C I.
Okay. Can you please come and just mention your name?
Okay, can you please come and just announce your name and.
I'm Chrissy with S C I U, I don't think we've met in person yet, just by phone. Yeah, I just wanted to remind you that S C I U is also part of this, and that we represent the pharmacy and the lab and medical imaging, and a lot of different employees that you're going to need, so don't forget about us.
Okay, um.
Did I?
Huh?
Did I?
Did it die? Oh, well, we got big mouths, um.
Doc, I, I know, I know we gotta crawl before we walk. Is there talks, is there anything ongoing with any other potential hospitals, or any mergers, or any assistance from somebody else, or is Insight going alone on this thing?
Well, you know, we're happy to work with anyone that would, you know, support the growth and the bigger growth of the hospital, so we're, we're ready to partner with everyone. What I understand is that several hospitals uh fired, um check out the, so the, and so on. But as I predicted, I didn't believe anyone to take it that seriously, it's too difficult for many hospitals. You're building a hospital, so we know, and I am aware of several hospitals fired. We're very encouraging, they feel that they could do something that was aggressive and put the community, but um nobody, uh everybody backed them. And we, we do not try and solicit.
Is all of Insight on the nonprofit status, or is it just bits and pieces of it?
I would say it's the majority, but some of it's more profitable. More profitable, I guess, it started as a for-profit, uh, and you can't.
You had said you're waiting on the high department of health, or very, and they're responsive, it's just the process.
It's, they're very responsive, but you know, just, just before we, we open the facility, they definitely get happy, they can get that for the H A. Uh P D C, which is J C O, they're also gonna have. And, and you know, there's a three-year cycle, and around mid-September, so we know that, yeah. So there's a few things like that, J C O's offices, and that we're getting, you know, our, our staff and teams, but it's starting with you to, to.
I would, I know that this is gonna be done in phases, actually, you'll forgive mine, so, so I think that's wise to do that, definitely. You know, I believe it is. There's a couple of problems that we have, that I don't know that our recall language matches up with your intentions to recall. Meaning, as you said, to get the proper people in the proper spots, so that they're doing their stuff, so that our contract matches that. The other thing is, and we're gonna help you with that, seriously, I mean, I, I can't over emphasize that. We want our jobs back, we want the hospital up and running, we've gone through a lot of, a lot of turmoil trying to save this hospital from various entities that came before you did, sir. You know, we've been in this mess ever since forum, if anybody remembers that, we've been in this thing since Chuck Johns was up. So, at any rate, transparency and planning with us is. Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Tom Connolly, I'm the president of local twenty twenty-six Ashby. I represent the registered nurses at Trumbull Hospital, I'm also a registered nurse, been at the hospital about fifty years, so I feel like I grew up there. Yeah, I didn't totally grow up, though, just to be, anyways. The uh, that's what we need to do, and we need transparency, we need to know what your intentions are, what goals you want to achieve, so that we can match them up with ours and, and negotiate effectively, efficiently, and so that we can get my people back. Right now, I have no idea how many nurses are coming back. And with the nursing shortage, you need every blessed one of them that you can get, if you wanna keep your services going. So if I can give them some sort of idea about where they're going, I mean, it doesn't have to be in stone, it doesn't have, but I need some sort of discussion regarding that, and I'm probably sure Chrissy does, and, and everybody does too, so we can get our employees back to work. Because for us to do oh, the question was, huh, man? I said I'm like that preacher, I know, when he writes a sermon, he gets, he's too lazy to stop, anyway, anyway. Yeah.
I need her name.
How many people do we think that we want to do on the first phase of the recall? That was Debbie Benner, she's the regional director of Ashby Ohio Councilway, she's actually my boss, sorta.
No, yeah, for sure, it's a very good question, the, the issue is not so much um the numbers that we need, we wanna start with who's available, and like, who's actually available to come back. For example, if, if you, like, a number, you can say, let's say there's ten people. Maybe you have a very senior lab person, it's very good, one particular lab, you know, if they're not there, then we can't run that lab, similarly, radiology, pharma, et cetera. So we're just not aware of what kind of assets, most important thing to me is human assets, what's actually available. Now, we can accelerate, depending on, on the level of expertise that's available, if you don't have ICU nurses, and you, you are now having to go to agency, that's a little difficult for us, you know, but if we have ICU trainers, since they're available to staff the ICU, ten nurses, so it can't be a specific number, but we are going to start, we can start hearing from us about who's currently available. So again, it's, it's, it's a little.
Respectfully, that was the union's request three years, or three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago to answer this question?
Yes. To start polling our people to see who was going to.
I see, I see, we got our CHOW, I think the change of ownership was about three weeks ago, I believe, that's what, we just thought we're it. We got it, you know, and so, so happy about that, uh but now that we look for the dots, the Ts, that plus all that's gonna happen.
Doc, who's your management team now? I know, I know Ms. Russo is gone, Dr. Gons is gone, Alexa, I don't know what's her status, who are we supposed to deal with? What does your upper management staff look like right now?
Lex is still with us, isn't she? So, Lex is great, um, well, again, we're quick to reach out, and we're gonna see who exactly is available, currently, I'm gonna be the CEO. So I'm, I personally am not, it's like, it's gonna be in and around, but we have to. This is gonna be a heavy, heavy kill. So, you know, so again, here, unfortunately, unfortunately, we're not even senior, right? Um if we, surgery's needed, you know, my specialty, I would be, as necessary, I don't believe that those are some procedures. So we, we have um feelers out for different staff, we can have, but we have staff available, corporate level, it's a CSO, C R O, chief of emergency, second office, very successful, we already looked at the accounts, it's ready to go. I believe these are going to be much higher percentage, so, um, and so really excited, we have a corporate ally to if we do, if we don't find, we're able to do that now. So we're all, we're all taking the second.
Man, and I, I apologize, but we weren't really, commissioners, we weren't opening up for all the public questions, we were gonna stay afterwards and answer uh the public's questions, I hate to be the.
It looks like there's only a couple, I say, let's.
Okay, sure, come on.
Dr. Shaw, it's time.
I was actually waiting for the public comment, so, anyway, so, I mean, I'm Anne Mueller with the Ohio Nurses Association, we represent the registered nurses at Hillside, we're an evaluation hospital. So I wanna um repeat what Mr. Connolly and what Ms. Lewis has said about we need to work with the unions in order to reopen these hospitals. Regarding me getting the um, the CHOW um for Hillside, we have been asking probably for three months what we can do to help move that along, um and we've essentially been posted, nobody's even responding to our offers of help. Yeah, so I guess I'm repeating that here now publicly, to say that we are here and ready, going and able to make whatever phone calls, reaching out to whatever public officials you need us to do, to move that along, so that we can reopen the Hillside Hospital as well. I wanna remind the commissioners that we um um appreciate the sentiment that you have expressed here today about Insight, and that that really the, the, the primary um cause of why we're here today is because of Stewart. But I will say, I don't think it's reasonable to say that Insight hasn't failed its employees as well. We failed to provide a warrant notice, we failed to provide reasonable layoff notice, our contract required two weeks' notice. Employees were not given that, they were not paid, employees still um waiting for a vacation leave to be reconciled. Um there's many issues that are still in dispute, um that Insight and our union need to still work out in order to um to move on with past closures that happened roughly in March twenty eighth. So please, reach out to whoever you need to, to make that happen. Um, I just wanna say, same thing, that our members are gonna need notice. Our recall language is fairly tight, because it's, it's assumed that the hospital, you know, is didn't shut down and then reopening, so we have people that have moved on, um they're gonna need more than a week's notice um to return to work at Hillside, so um please work with us to resolve that, thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for staging this meeting.
You have come back today, again, I uh really appreciate you seeing me, and uh I hope also you understand what happened, where we weren't in a position to really control the hospital. It would have been better for us, reputationally, I would say, and easier for us to let the hospital shut down back in September, not on our watch, and we reopen it. Outside of everything Stewart did, that would have been pretty easy for us to do. And we chose not to do that, because we saw staff, the energy, I looked at the numbers, I said, okay, this is still, there's a few things that they weren't doing. So coming now to uh the end stages, that's where these were very unexpected events that occurred. You know, we were really left in a position where arms behind our backs, sign this, we're not to be, I, probably be doing the work, your A I is how, you think. These are things that I, I would say are learned now, but they were not predictable to me, that this was gonna happen, you think that that's gonna reach to that level. So we do very much wanna reopen. As far as your help in, in terms of the uh, uh the CHOW, uh that's where I don't know if we can get public support, I don't think that's gonna be, I don't you're on track, so this, I don't think that that's really the barrier, it's just processes of the government. The government's, you know, not quite the same as it was before, in terms of I, their own layoffs, and so on, status, the bill, and certain things, so we're just plodding through that process, but I don't again, we appreciate it, and if, if support is needed, perhaps we can ask them as well, letters, and so on and so forth, but again, we're doing everything we can.
Thank you, Doctor.
I can wait till afterwards, or we can do it now, so.
Uh well, you can, uh, if we only have a couple of comments, because we can't open it up to.
I understand, I can wait till afterwards, if you want to.
Okay, but we are gonna have uh the doctor, we will schedule media to speak to the doctor back in um my office. So it'd be better if you have a comment, or you have a question?
Yeah, I do, I, I don't think I need a microphone, okay, I used to be a soccer coach, so I used to yell, and two things here, one, um.
What is your name, name?
Oh, James Fell. I, I was, my wife and I were born at Trumbull Hospital, our kids were born there, I've both my knees replaced, my wife, I don't need replaced at Trumbull Hospital. It's a deep seated with us. Um, you said there was a couple of things you still have to go through with Stewart to get.
Yes.
Is there anything at the federal level and the state level that can help you along, like Mr. Yost did down in Columbus, to help you get through those hurdles? Is there anything, I mean, that might be something, you might sit down with your staff and find out, Mr. Joyce, if there's anything you do to help you get through those hurdles? Cause as long as you're still tied to them, especially mine, you gotta go through there, that scares me, cause you can't trust them now. And then the other thing is this, uh since you guys closed, things have changed big time. Uh there will be Medicaid cuts coming, and being a nonprofit, you guys rely on them heavily, and it's out of your hands how that works. Have you, is there a roadblock there that you see forthcoming? And is there solutions to, or is it just something you have to feel as you go along?
Um, so, you know, in, in terms of the first question about Stewart, they do have our assets, which is the available assets that are current. And they still hold that, that information, our ability to keep track, get that back again, uh they, we do need that from them. So we're trying to find ways where we can do that, uh perhaps government can help. Uh it is not easy, there's technical reasons why they can keep it away from us, if uh it's their licenses, there's all sorts of reasons that you keep that, for us to get into those accounts, they'll love to be able to do that, but that's not a barrier, you know, we recognize that, like, even if they we're gonna move ahead, when we want those assets back, we're gonna move ahead, I don't know whether we're gonna see anything. Um, the second uh point that you're making about the Medicaid catch, that is concerning for us. What is exactly gonna happen, I'm not sure, my personal reading is that Medicaid itself likely will not get too badly cut, but there'll be less people that'll be eligible for Medicaid, so we're gonna be seeing a lot more uninsured people, is what I'm anticipating. But we have to be ready for that, we have to be a couple of steps ahead for that and so on. But again, who knows, if the economy improves to the point that, you know, people don't need Medicaid as much, then maybe that, that would be a fashion point. So we're, we're, we have to react in reality, and, and to deal with it financially, that's kind of our responsibility, so really work with the ecosystem, doesn't, I would say, intimidate us, but we do anticipate it's gonna be some problems to be faced.
Mayor, do you have something else?
Okay, good, um, we're gonna be wrapping up here, I think um we need to um get, Doctor, I know the media's gonna have some questions, so what we'll do, um one at a time, we will have Doc back in the uh office area, and we will schedule uh times for the media uh to come back, uh one-on-one, Doctor, you, uh well, you had requested that. Um, the commissioners will be here to answer any further questions. Uh we appreciate you all who have been so patient, and who have uh sat here and listened to Doc, I think you can sense from what we see here today, that the heart and passion is about opening up these hospitals, and I do feel more optimistic than I ever have felt, that you can work with the unions, you can get the nurses back to work, and you can get the doctors back to work, and Doc, you know, you have full support of the mayor, congressman, uh senator. You see the commissioners, you have our full support, we look forward to you being there on the range.
State representative, the acting.
I'm sorry? Yes, I'll leave it, did you have a question? And our state representative, Tom. I too tend to miss people, but he's sitting behind me, Doc. Sorry about that. Uh the public can hit uh my state, and if you have any questions, uh the doctor won't be available, but uh the commissioners will be here.
I need a motion to adjourn, I need a motion to adjourn.